So this is now the business meeting for February 2019 of the Cobb County School Board. And now would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And now we have board recognitions.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the board, if you will, join me in front of the dais. And Dr. Kevin Daniel will bring up recognitions.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent. We're going to begin tonight by recognizing Osborn High School's JROTC Leadership and Academic Team. They won the 2018 U.S. Army JROTC Academic Bowl, and they are the Southeast Regional Champions after advancing through two phases. After advancing through two phases of online competition, the team placed first overall. The team is nationally ranked in the top 1% academically out of 1,781 schools with an Army JROTC program. They won an all-expense paid trip to Washington DC to compete for the national championship that will occur this summer, and they have the distinction of being the only high school in the nation to advance to the championship round in DC 12 of the past 13 years. Congratulations. Please come forward, be recognized by the board. I see in the back, I'm going to ask their principal, Josh Moreyall, to come forward, along with Chief Warrant Officer Rodney Fagan and CTA supervisor, Ms. Brown. Please come forward as well with the team.
I'll say that again, fourth state championship for the Osborn Female Raider Team. Raider competition is a physically and mentally challenging academic and athletic competition. They had to do a five-kilometer run, one-mile cross-country run with a 35-pound rucksack, and a strength and agility test, among many other things that they had to do. They have the distinction of placing fifth in the nation. Congratulations. Please come forward, be recognized by the board and the superintendent. Exactly. I like it. We first want to announce the American School Counselor Association designated February the 4th through the 8th as the National School Counseling Week, and the district would like to take this opportunity to recognize and thank all of our counselors for the tremendous impact they have on our students' achievement, academic, career, social-emotional success, you name it. They have a huge impact, and we thank you for that. Would all of our counselors in the room please stand? I know that we will recognize some of you individually, but as a group, if you'll come forward as a representation of all of our counselors across the district and be recognized by the board and the superintendent. I'm going to ask Dr. Marsh and Ms. Hugle to stay up to the front of the room. We've got to recognize some of these counselors individually for some great work that they have done. Let them get seated, but we will start with Griffin Middle School for receiving the Ramp designation. Ramp is the American...I like it. I'll tell a little bit about it before we do the handshake and just hold right there a moment. But Ramp is the American School Counselor Association Recognized Model Program. The Ramp designation recognizes schools that are committed to delivering an exemplary, comprehensive school counseling program. They align their program with the criteria of the national model, which is a framework for a comprehensive, data-driven school counseling program. Other schools will strive to reach this level. So we want to invite you to come up along with Principal Paul Gillahan. Our school counselors are Julia Richardson, Stella Mahia, Cheryl McFadden, and Tessa Turner. Please come forward, be recognized by the board and the superintendent. In conjunction with the school...we want to recognize our School Counselors of the Year in conjunction with the National School Counseling Week. Our School Counselors of the Year make a tremendous impact as well on the students, the staff, and the communities. They represent the best of the profession, and they continue by raising the bar with new and creative lessons in our schools and practices in our schools. So we are very proud of all of them, and these are our district-level School Counselors of the Year. So let's start with elementary level. If Laquida Hardeman will please stand. Laquida Hardeman, I'm going to ask that Melissa Rome, the Assistant Principal, also come up and join her. And Brett Ward, the principal last year at Smyrna, is here as well. Please come join her as she gets recognized by the board and the superintendent. Congratulations. Yes. Congratulations. Yes. Next, we want to recognize our Middle School Counselor of the Year, and that's Barbara Truluck. If she'll come forward along with Principal Palmer, Principal Lisa Jackson. Please come forward. And next, we have our High School Counselor of the Year, and that's Tony Dickerson from McKeaton High School. She's currently...she is currently at Loving Good Middle School, too. So we're going to ask the Loving Good Middle School Assistant Principal Sandy Cox to come forward, be recognized by the board with her. And our final recognition tonight celebrates the announcement that one of our very own, Michelle Stevens, of Kemp Elementary School, has been named the 2019 Georgia School Counselor of the Year. Please stand. Will she stand where you are? I'm going to get you to stop right here a moment. Along with your Principal Shay Thomas, join her right here. Let me tell you some of the criteria that they use for this. The school counseling innovations, the effective school counseling programs, the leadership and advocacy skills, and contributions to student advancement. We are very proud of you for being the Georgia School Counselor of the Year. Congratulations and be recognized by the board and the superintendent. Mr. Chair, that concludes our recognitions for this evening. Okay, all right. So now, Mr. Doyle, do we have any public comments?
We do, Mr. Chair. We have 10 speakers tonight. How much time can we allot?
Three minutes apiece.
Three minutes.
That doesn't mean they have to use the whole three, but we'll give them three.
Our first speaker is Doc Holliday, who will discuss the achievement gap. He'll be followed by Monica Delancey.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to share a few of my thoughts with you. I'm Doc Holliday. I have a long history at Cobb County Schools. I was the first African-American high school principal ever when they appointed me at Wheeler High School in 1992. I've been assistant superintendent for school improvement. I've been a principal of Campbell Middle School, and I'm a retired associate professor emeritus at Kennesaw State University. Very proud of some of the things I've had an opportunity to experience here at Cobb County Schools. However, I must tell you, I'm very disappointed in what I've been reading recently in the Merida Daily Journal. Not to say that everything is accurate, but it's alarming enough that we need to readjust some of the things we're doing. Being efficient does not necessarily mean you're being effective. Cobb County has always been a well-run school system, but we also in the past have been a very effective school system in terms of educating our youngsters. This, in my opinion, is no longer the case. We have a large central office staff, in my opinion, is not very productive, making decisions that impact our kids in a negative way. And I look at the leadership that's being appointed in some of these schools on the west side and south side. Generally, they're inexperienced people. Nothing wrong with that. We all have to get our experience somewhere. But in your most challenging schools, you don't send your most inexperienced principals. We have good teachers down there, but good teachers deserve good leadership. Unfortunately, the trend in those schools is a downward spiral. You don't have to take back for a word before you look at the data, your milestone tests, et cetera.
30 seconds.
The leadership selection criteria must be changed. You can't continue to send inexperienced people down there and hope for positive results. Again, I'm going to be a little more active in what's going on and wish you the very best in making some of these changes.
Our next speaker is Monica Delancey, who will discuss Riverside Pebblebrook Community, followed by Mary Litman.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak tonight. First, I want to brag on Riverside and Pebblebrook area. Last week, Pebblebrook celebrated Black History Month with a very nice production last Friday. And Riverside, both Riverside, had their school council meetings. Riverside Primary held its school council meeting last Thursday night. Very well done, was very productive. And just this past Tuesday evening, Riverside Intermediate held their school council meeting. But switching gears a little bit, I think that most of you have heard about some of the issues that's going on in the Riverside community as it pertains to some of our apartment complexes. Three of our apartment complexes were cited last September and were given the opportunity to go to court for 85 code violations. They were supposed to go to court in December. They got their court case reset. Then again, they went to court on January 31st. Again, they got their court case reset. This court took place in the magistrate courtroom M303. Now, landlords get to have their cases reset, but when tenants go into the same courtroom to hear their cases of eviction, they only get seven days. They have to move out if they don't have the money. So therefore, a lot of tenants are complaining. We've been hosting town hall meetings. We've been going to the board commission meeting as well. But when you think about the Pebblebrook area, there are 25 apartment complexes, mobile homes, that are in this attended zone. That means six out of 10 students are coming from households that are rented. The majority of renters are paying over 40% to 50% of their income on rent, and they do not receive any subsidies. The truth of the matter is this, that people need a place to live. They need a safe, clean place to live. And with stagnant wages, choices are limited to older apartment complexes or apartments that have less guidelines, which results in other issues. So as we're thinking about strategies to improve our academics, think about those parents who are advocating for their children, because before they can advocate in schools, they have to go through so many hurdles before they get to the schools. And so I leave you with this quote in honor of Black History Month. "Malcolm King, it is always the right time to do what is right." Thank you very much.
The next seven speakers will address Walton Fast Pitch facilities. Next, we have Mary Litman, and she'll be followed by Kelly Landroch.
Good evening. My name is Mary Litman. My daughter plays Walton Fast Pitch. At the roundtable discussion in January at Dickerson, it occurred to us that Mrs. Davis and Mr. Howard were probably not aware of the history of Walton Fast Pitch. We would like to take this opportunity to explain how the Fast Pitch facilities were originally funded. And if you would, please check out all of the pictures that we have brought with us. We are here to be a voice of the past, present, and future of Walton Fast Pitch. The past players, board members, families, and local businesses put their blood, sweat, and most importantly, dollars into Walton Fast Pitch. We've actually spoken to the head coaches and board members who served beginning in 1995. They feel robbed and lied to. On several occasions, they were told two to three years and you'll have everything back, just as it is today on campus. Here we are, five years later, and what we would like to know is, when will the replacement plan be put in motion? We would also like some sort of response to this question within the next two weeks.
Next is Kelly Landroch, if I have the names pronounced correctly. And after her will be Julie Andriano.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Landroch with Walton Fast Pitch. I have two daughters that are Walton athletes. One is a freshman on the Walton Fast Pitch team. To continue, Todd Downs, a former head coach at Walton, started the on-campus program in 1995 from scratch. He started by installing a fence, a field, a ticket booth with booster
Our next speaker is Monica Delancy, who will discuss Riverside Pebblebrook Community, followed by Mary Litman.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak tonight. First, I want to brag on Riverside and Pebblebrook area. Last week, Pebblebrook celebrated Black History Month with a very nice production last Friday. And Riverside, both Riverside, had their school council meetings. Riverside Primary held its school council meeting last Thursday night. Very well done, was very productive. And just this past Tuesday evening, Riverside Intermediate held their school council meeting. But switching gears a little bit, I think that most of you have heard about some of the issues that's going on in the Riverside community as it pertains to some of our apartment complexes. Three of our apartment complexes were cited last September and were given the opportunity to go to court for eighty-five code violations. They were supposed to go to court in December, they got their court case reset. Then again, they went to court on January 31st, again, they got their court case reset. This court took place in the magistrate courtroom, M303. Now, landlords get to have their cases reset, but when tenants go into the same courtroom to hear their cases of eviction, they only get seven days and they have to move out if they don't have the money. So therefore, a lot of tenants are complaining. We've been hosting town hall meetings, we've been going to the board commission meeting as well. But when you think about the Pebblebrook area, there are twenty-five apartment complexes, mobile homes, that are in this attended zone. That means six out of ten students are coming from households that are rented. The majority of renters are paying over forty to fifty percent of their income on rent, and they do not receive any subsidies. The truth of the matter is this, that people need a place to live. They need a safe, clean place to live. And with stagnant wages, choices are limited to older apartment complexes or apartments that have less guidelines, which results in other issues. So as we're thinking about strategies to improve our academics, think about those parents who are advocating for their children, because before they can advocate in schools, they have to go through so many hurdles before they get to the schools. And so I leave you with this quote, in honor of Black History Month. "Malcolm King, it's always the right time to do what is right." Thank you very much.
The next seven speakers will address Walton Fast Pitch facilities. Next, we have Mary Litman, and she'll be followed by Kelly Landroch.
Good evening. My name is Mary Litman. My daughter plays Walton Fast Pitch. At the roundtable discussion in January at Dickerson, it occurred to us that Mrs. Davis and Mr. Howard were probably not aware of the history of Walton Fast Pitch. We would like to take this opportunity to explain how the Fast Pitch facilities were originally funded. And if you would, please check out all of the pictures that we have brought with us. We are here to be a voice of the past, present, and future of Walton Fast Pitch. The past players, board members, families, and local businesses put their blood, sweat, and most importantly, dollars into Walton Fast Pitch. We've actually spoken to the head coaches and board members who served beginning in 1995. They feel robbed and lied to. On several occasions, they were told, "Two to three years and you'll have everything back, just as it is today, on campus." Here we are, five years later. And what we would like to know is, when will the replacement plan be put in motion? We would also like some sort of response to this question within the next two weeks.
Next is Kelly Landroch, if I have the names pronounced correctly. And after her will be Julie Andriano.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Landroch with Walton Fast Pitch. I have two daughters that are Walton athletes. One is a freshman on the Walton Fast Pitch team. To continue, Todd Downs, a former head coach at Walton, started the on-campus program in 1995 from scratch. He started by installing a fence, a field, a ticket booth with Booster Club funding, none of which was paid for by Cobb County or SPOST. Everything was demolished and lost in 2015. And then Walton's Fast Pitch Booster Club secured $160,000 for the field house. This was not an empty building. It housed the indoor batting cages, with hitting nets, a pitching mound, a training area, a locker room with lockers, a bathroom, and a furnished coach's office, none of which was paid for by Cobb County or SPOST. Everything was demolished and lost in 2015. It is important to note that the Booster Club spent countless hours on raising the funds for these facilities. Booster members also met with Senator Isaacson and many local businesses as part of their capital campaign. Those efforts resulted in thousands of dollars, including a substantial grant from the state of Georgia. The scoreboard, outdoor lighting, and indoor carpet are just a few of the items that were donated by businesses and the Walton families. Once again, as we ask, when will the replacement plan be put in motion? We would like a response in the next two weeks. Thank you for your time.
Next is Julie Andriano. She'll be followed by John Holland.
Good evening. Julie Andriano for Walton Fast Pitch. I personally have had two daughters in the Walton program over the past eleven years. The capital campaigning continued when Walton's Fast Pitch Booster Club secured another $63,000 for the concession building. This renovation came with restrooms, a storage facility, and a press box, none of which was paid for by Cobb County or SPOST. Everything was demolished in 2015. Walton Fast Pitch has missed out on potential revenue. Twelve thousand in annual revenue was secured with the rental of our facilities. Many community teams seek field space and indoor facilities, which we would rent out during our offseason. Another ten thousand in annual revenue was secured with signed sponsorships in the form of fence banners. Our field on the corner of campus was ideal for marketing those businesses to the community, and local businesses paid top dollar for the exposure. All in all, we've missed $100,000 in potential revenue for the program. Missed revenue to this degree leads to higher dues and added fundraising pressure for the current Fast Pitch families. Again, I ask, when will this replacement plan be put in motion? And I would like and appreciate your response to my question within two weeks. Thank you.
Next speaker is John Holland, and he'll be followed by Amy Hecklinsky.
My name's John Holland. I'm with Walton Fast Pitch, and I have a rising eighth grader in the Fast Pitch program. The present-day Walton Fast Pitch Booster Club is seeking the replacement of on-campus facilities that were demolished in 2015. Nothing additional, nothing larger, nothing more. The cost of replacement will certainly be more, given inflation, but we ask that the replacement facilities include similar features and similar square footage. A field house with a sprinkler system, a field house with all the indoor features, a concession building with restrooms, a press box, storage facility, and so on. We have six young ladies in the Walton Fast Pitch program. They don't have a locker room. In fact, their equipment has been stolen and vandalized at the county park. They don't have a true home game where the Walton community can easily spectate. In fact, they spend time every day of the week traveling to every home game and practice. There have been a few instances where, when our junior players were left feeling unsafe, uneasy, because Cobb County Police had to respond to situations at the county park where we play. Does any of this sound like any other Fast Pitch program in Cobb County?
Next is Amy Hecklinsky. She'll be followed by Suzanne Crosswhite.
I'm Amy Hecklinsky with Walton Fast Pitch. Good evening, and it's nice to see you, Mrs. Davis. In 2016, it was reported that the initial planning had Fast Pitch actually returning to campus, but it was gonna be on the existing grass practice field. We believe that this scenario is not ideal, and frankly, it's just not a good idea. And this is why. It is impossible for a school of our size, serving the number of students and student athletes, to lose field space of any kind. Especially a practice field that is utilized by four high school soccer teams, four high school lacrosse teams, six junior lacrosse teams, three high school football teams, and three junior football teams. And that list really probably isn't even all-inclusive. So what does that mean? That practice field is serving well over 500 student athletes that actually use that field on our campus year-round. Losing the existing practice field on campus would only put Walton in a less equitable situation compared to other Cobb high schools, even high schools with less enrollment. Walton student athletes deserve equitable facilities that students get at other Cobb high schools. Therefore, adding softball to the existing practice field on our campus will only result in taking away from all of the other programs that I just mentioned. This is not our desire, nor is this the answer. And so again, we ask, when will the replacement plan be put in motion? Thank you, I appreciate your time, and again, we would love to hear your response within two weeks. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Crosswhite, and she'll be followed by Chris Andriano.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. My name is Suzanne Crosswhite. My daughter plays softball at Walton. She's proud to say that her father and mother have been attending elementary school through high school in Cobb County post-five and six, where no strangers to Cobb. My mother began coaching Cobb County youth sports over nearly thirty years ago, so we are not going anywhere. We've chosen Cobb County as our home. We've stayed here. We ask that you give a home back to our Walton High School team. It is our, Walton has the third-largest enrollment in Cobb County, yet we have the second-to-smallest footprint with just forty-three acres, of which forty acres are usable space. Walton is entirely maxed out. National statistics suggest that schools of Walton's enrollment generally sit on fifty-eight acres or more. Therein lies the problem. It is our understanding that the school district has unallocated funds and a land acquisition budget line item within SPOST. Purchasing additional acres for Walton's population is a proper and equitable use of those funds. There are land possibilities literally right across the street from our campus. We urge you to seek and procure the land so construction can begin sooner rather than later on our promised replacement facility. As the others have asked, when will the replacement plan be put in motion? And I'll be nicer, I'll give you two weeks and a couple of days. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chris Andriano. He'll be followed by Jenna Salier.
Hi, good evening. My name is Chris Andriano, and with the Walton Fast Pitch program. Plans to return Fast Pitch and tennis to Walton, to Walton's campus are actually listed in the SPOST V notebook, and we understand the notebook can span up to five years. Walton Fast Pitch urges the school district to fund our promised replacement facilities as a priority in SPOST V. We've been waiting patiently for the past five years. Pushing our project timeline further would force us off-campus for up to ten years. It's not equitable for the young ladies in the high school and junior programs. I've had two daughters that have gone through the program. One is graduated. She's in her master's program now. She's helping as an assistant coach with the Walton program, and she loves the school, and she loves the experience that she had there. My other daughter just is graduating in May, and she's the first class to have never actually played on campus, and she feels cheated by that. So each year that passes without having facilities, more and more girls are gonna have gone and never having seen an onsite facility, never having had the opportunity to experience what it's like to play on campus. So, you know, from my understanding, I think we're probably the only school in Cobb County that has girls, girls' Fast Pitch program that's going through this. So we just urge you to please help us to get these facilities back on campus as soon as possible, so it minimizes the impact with our girls moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Our final speaker, Mr. Chair, is Jenna Salier, who will discuss National Signing Day.
Good evening. My name is Jenna Salier, and I am a senior at Lassiter High School. I was denied a request to participate in National Signing Day at my school. I've accepted an offer to Life University to play Division One Rugby, and this is a huge accomplishment that the athletic director refused to let me celebrate with fellow athletes of the senior class. I understand my sport is not offered at my school, which is the original reasoning of why I could not participate. However, there are athletes participating in Signing Day that are also not a part of Lassiter Athletics. My question is, why was I denied? What's the difference between me and these other athletes? I have posted on social media not expecting anything other than a reaction from friends and family. However, my comments were reposted so many times that I have heard from members of the media and rugby teams, including all-star, college, and professional teams, as well as countless members of the general public across the country, all of whom have expressed support for my position on this matter. I've also started a petition, which in two days gained 134 signs. I was lucky that the college I'm going to attend is close by, and they put on a very nice signing event for me last weekend. I'm here to speak for future athletes who might find themselves in the position I was in. I feel that any high school athlete, regardless of sport or affiliation, should be allowed to share this milestone experience with their classmates as they pursue their academic and athletic careers. All schools should be proud of all their athletes. They should want to allow the student to represent their high school when signing for college. I emailed every A.D. in Cobb County and a representative from GHSA, and from those that have replied so far, there are mixed results in how each school approaches this. We are Cobb County. One team, one goal, student success. Let's have all Cobb County athletes be celebrated for their achievements. Please consider making a county policy that National Signing Day really is National Signing Day. Not GHSA Signing Day, not X-School Signing Day, but National Signing Day. Thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you to our public speakers. Now, to remind the board, we're changing the agenda up a little bit right now. We're going to move away from, we're gonna take the items requiring executive session vote, because we're gonna have to go back into executive session after we get through here. So that, those votes will be taken after that. Okay? Is that, I got that? Everybody's on board? Okay, so the next thing we will do is go to the action agenda. We had three items that were on, agreed to put these on the consent agenda, and so do I hear, do we need a motion and vote? So without objection, all these items are approved for the consent. Okay. Alright, so that takes us to that. Now, that brings us to board comments. And, what?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do we want to do board comments after we come back from?
No, we're going to do it now.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so we'll start with Ms. Davis.
I just want to thank everyone that came and spoke today. It's very important that we hear from everyone. I had a wonderful time last week celebrating the teacher and classified employees of the year for these Cobb Cluster. And there was one thing that came up over and over again while we watched videos of colleagues and students say why that person was so deserving. And whether it was a teacher, or a nurse, or a custodian, the idea of making connections with kids, and kids feeling like that person really cared about them, was a recurring theme. In the Georgia Student Survey results from last year, seventy-seven percent of students across the state reported having an adult at the school they can talk to if they need help. Just seventy-seven percent. Ideally, we could get to a place where that number is 100. Our counselors, who we just celebrated last week and here today, as you saw, along with our school social workers and nurses, really are at the forefront in the effort to support our students' mental well-being. They often know what's going on with the child even when no one else does. And this leads to something that the organization Sandy Hook Promise communicates, that our children's well-being and safety are connected. I'm encouraged that the state is providing some funding for grant recipients to add mental health professionals to schools, and hope that we can do even more so that more schools have an extra layer of support for our children when they need it. On a completely unrelated note, I hope to be attending a Walton Wheeler basketball game next week, which means they both will have won their game this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, something that many of you may not know, that this year, this year marks the 400th anniversary of African men and women in what we now know as the United States of America. So, this month is Black History Month, so I thought it appropriate to take a moment. Four hundred years ago, about 350 Africans were kinda crammed into the lower decks of a Portuguese ship, and arrived at what's kinda modern-day Mexico. Only half of the 350 Africans on that ship survived that horrific journey across the Atlantic. That ship was raided by some pirates, from some English pirates, and they were looking for gold and looking for other valuables, and what they found was human cargo. They took about twenty-five Africans, and they sailed up to what we now know as Hampton, Virginia. And that's the first documented people of African descent in the United, in what we now know as the United States. Fast forward about 250 years to about 1860, the U.S. Census has on record about four million, four million black people in the United States of America. And because many of them were marked as slaves, the four million slaves at the time was worth about $2 billion at the time, which is about $10 trillion in today's money. Of course, that's 1960, and many of you read your history and know that the next few years, we had a terrible Civil War. Whether you wanna argue if it's about slavery, or if it's about economics or way of life, $2 billion in that time is nothing to sneeze at. Four million slaves. Fast forward another hundred years to some big things that happened. As we know, we had World War I, World War II, and other things. But during that time after the Civil War, there was an institutional system of segregation, which is just a fancy way of saying separation based on race. And in 1954, there was a national ruling called Brown versus the Board of Education. It wasn't here, don't worry. Board of Education in Topeka, Kansas, the Supreme Court ruled that segregation was unlawful. But I want you to know something. 1954, after that, southern states really dug in, and Georgia was one of them. Cobb County Schools, Atlanta Public Schools, and all the other school systems in Georgia dug in as well. And it wasn't until 1961 that Atlanta Public Schools was forced to integrate. And I say forced, meaning by seriously, heavily serious legal matters. Now, Cobb County took a little bit extra time, and Marietta and Cobb County in 1964, 1965. Back in 1965, Cobb County voted five to one, and finally allowing integration. So that's a big deal, and I think on this Black History Month, we should acknowledge and, you know, really, you know, think about this and teach this to our families, that it was just 1965 where Cobb County allowed integration, and we were talking about integration of races. We've made some leaps and bounds since then. Of course, something can come into law, but it takes a lot, a long time to change hearts. It wasn't until, let's see, nineteen, really that resistance here in Cobb County and other places in Georgia lasted for many, many years. Just to give you a scope of what we're talking about, local and state governments were perfectly fine closing public education to make sure that integration doesn't happen, like closing it all together. And I think it's important to know where we've come from. Literally, no kid is gonna get a public education if we have to mix races. That's what the tone was. So it's important to know that. The other thing is important to know that local leaders at that time developed something called school choice, and that's the birth of school choice, was really on the grounds of being able to go where I wanna go because of the racial issues that were happening all over the country. Another thing that is kind of important to know, that, I mean, that's where a lot of the private schools that we know were opened and expanded during that time to try to avoid the mixing of races. I say that to say that we've come a long way. In the late 1970s, we have our first black principal here in Cobb County, and we also, ironically, by providence, I'd say Doc Holliday was here. I was just doing some research on him. The first black principal actually spoke today for public comment in 1992, high school principal. And we're yet to elect our first African-American chair, but, you know, that's another story. We'll, we'll, is that weird? No? Okay. So I think it's important to talk about. At some point, we'll have another first. But Cobb County is one of the most diverse districts in the entire state, and we're leaders here. So I think it's important to just know that it's okay to lead. And as I told the Lindley Middle School Junior Beta Club, that leaders are gonna lead. And we have a great opportunity to do that, and I wanted to use this public comment to celebrate Black History, know that we've come from some dark places, and we're at a place now where we can truly lead, and not be behind, but truly lead. Not in just academic success, but for all of our kids. One team, one goal, student success. And we can do that here in Cobb County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. If I could just inject one little thing- If I could just inject one little thing along with your comments. A lot of people, I think, in Cobb County don't know this, but two or three years ago, James Carter retired as one of our assistant superintendents. And what a lot of people don't know is he was from Topeka, Kansas, and he taught one or two of the Brown children. So we have a connection to Brown v. Board of Education. Okay. Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things. Today concluded the LGPE East evaluations for the high school and for the middle schools. The high schools were Walton, Pope, North Cobb, Sprayberry, Wheeler, Kell, and Lester. And the middle schools were Mayberry, McCleskey, Palmer, Barber, Autry, Dodgin, High Tower Trail, Simpson, East Cobb, J.J. Daniel, and Dickerson. I want to say thank you for all the students who participated in these performances and these evaluations, and the staff that conducted all these events. Also want to say that March the 1st is Read Across America. I have a full agenda that day. I start out at Davis at 8:30, then I go to Garrison Mill at 9:30, then I go to Mountain View at 10:30, and I go to Tred at 11:30, go to Murdoch at 12:30, and conclude at Eastside at 1:30. So I got a full day. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Scamhorn. All right. Mr. Morgan.
Thank you. I will also add a note, struck a nerve in me, Dr. Howard, to know that in that landmark case of Brown versus Board of Education, the actual, the young lady, Linda Brown, actually died, 75 years old, and that strikes me. I love stories of David versus Goliath-type stories, and I think it speaks to the fabric of our country because, you know, I just, I know in my heart of hearts that sometimes people try to pin you down in your setbacks and your pain, but what's more important is how you bounce back from any setback, any stain, so to speak. And I just think about, if I just look around this room right now and I see the diversity that we have in this room just right this second, I think it speaks volumes to how far we have come as a country, you know? One of the things I don't think I've ever publicly shared that I really love about this guy sitting to my right is that, one of the things he says is, "Just treat people right", you know? And I think that, and I just love opportunities to get to know different people from different walks of life, and to me, that's fun. I get bored when it's the same old thing, same old people, same old conversations, and I just love that we, despite what has happened, where we are and where we can go as a country. Second thing I want to say is that I would be remiss if I did not thank Jennifer Lawson. She took a trek from here to Hoover, Alabama. Am I lying, Jennifer? And you know what it's for? The betterment of our children.
She didn't get her passport if they didn't get back.
She did, right? Because she's from out there that way, right? She is from out, she's not that bad to be a Bama girl. But anyway, the whole point is this. The point is this: there are those who are hungry to do better, learn more, and do more, and we've had many conversations about how do we continuously educate our children and make it more relevant and prevalent in real life? That'd never, ever be lost on me, Jennifer, and I want you to know, I'm deeply grateful that you took the time to go there to see what was happening in Hoover, Alabama, and what might be able to work here in the Cobb County School District. So I want you to know that I'm deeply grateful and thankful for who and what you are and what you represent for this school district, especially when it comes to our academics. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to take the opportunity to single out the Cobb County School District's performing arts at Pebblebrook. My wife and I had the opportunity to visit, or visit, observe, see, enjoy the legally blind performance. If you haven't been to one of those performances, you really need to do that. These kids are outstanding. They put on a great show, Mr. Timmerman, Mr. Adams. Like I say, five stars, first class. You really need to go see that. And in closing, I had the opportunity today to go to Hillgrove High School to Mr. Irwin's class and speak to the, to his group. I told the kids this today, and it's sincere. I was a teacher-coach for 25 years, administrator for about 10, and I've seen an awful lot of kids. But that group today, unbelievable, their behavior and respect in the way they carried themselves and stuff. Our school systems are producing great, and communities are producing great kids all over Cobb County, and that's a perfect example of one little snippet at the Hillgrove. Ms. Stewart, the principal, hats off to you. Keep up the good work. Thank you, Mr. ...
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to wish everybody a restful and safe winter break next week, and I hate to get political, but I will for a second, and wish everybody a safe and restful winter break next week that we have decided as a district and a board to put in place, and probably that would be the best place to leave it. Just saying. So, in all seriousness, we showed a video during the work session earlier about Here Comes the Bus App. Just want to give a shout-out again and let all the parents know about that. It's going to be going live March the 1st and be able to allow that immediate data and feedback for parents to know where their child's bus is in relation to picking up or dropping off. I want to give a shout-out too, to HR and all of our team members, because we sent out contracts last Friday, less than a week ago. By Monday, we had over 50% of those contracts signed and back. Today, we're over 80% signed and returned. And yes, it gives us the opportunity to know that we have somewhat locked in our great team members, our superstar teachers, but also, and more importantly, it gives those teachers the ability to know that they have a contract in hand for next year for employment. So there's a lot to be said about that, about the security of that. Want to give a shout-out, congratulations again to Bob Downs, going to be superintendent of Beaufort City School District. That would be number five for those of you that have lost track. I certainly have not, but again, wishing him all the congratulations. I will take a moment to brag because those of you that know me hardly ever hear me say anything about me, but tonight when we recognized the Army JROTC from Osborne, the Academic Bowl, I was on the first-ever Academic Bowl team in Paulding County. I have a Dallas New Era article, in case anybody wants to argue, referencing that. I won't say what the picture looks like, but, you know, I can't speak to that. But in all seriousness, that is truly awesome for that JROTC program in Osborne is just, they receive so many awards, and it's just awesome to see the camaraderie between those students. And speaking of students and one team, I want to give a shout-out to Jenna for making your public voice be heard, and more importantly, congratulations on your scholarship to Life University. This will be, in case you're wondering, you can count this as a signing day somewhat. I know it's not the real deal, but the, your comments will be replayed time and time again on our TV station. So you get more publicity for that. Congratulations, though, in all seriousness. And finally, I want to give a shout-out to Ms. Bonner, D.M. Bonner. I meet with her regularly, and I do most of the listening for those meetings. But in all seriousness, we enjoy a great relationship, but I told her this past time that the MLK event that they have at, at the church there, it is like a church service. You know, it's, it's awesome, but there's a young man, Andrew Brighton, that she always gets to do a rendition of MLK junior speech, and it might as well be Dr. King standing there giving it. I mean, he is just so awesome. The first time I heard him, I thought he was a student, so I went a little bit more boastful and bragging about, "Man, that's awesome right there," but I found out he wasn't. So, but anyway, it was, it was an awesome event because everybody got to come together and celebrate Dr. King, and all of the other no-ways-of-nonsense didn't matter in there. So I appreciate her for putting together that program as she always does each year. And we had Congress from Loudmilk come and speak and received a standing ovation, as a matter of fact. So it was truly an awesome event. It was so appropriate to have it in church because that's just, it kind of topped it off. So appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and I have a few that I'd like to mention. Mr. Wheeler and I attended the Stars of South Cobb Celebration Gala on January the 28th. That was the night before it didn't snow. And the, but thank you for putting safety first, Mr. Superintendent.
If it gets up to 70 degrees, we're liable to call school tomorrow.
That's right. You know, when the governor closes the state office, everybody starts closing offices. It just, you know, we better, better follow suit. But anyway, but that Monday evening, the PTAs of Pebblebrook and South Cobb hosted a combined PTA meeting and honored the principal of the year, teacher of the year. We have some eloquent, wonderful motivational speakers among our staff. I won't call out, call out names, but we had wonderful words of inspiration. Got to share a table with Ms. Sherri Hill, and my good friend, Mr. Wheeler, was awarded a recognition for all the wonderful things that you do. Of course, the person making the award was someone you had taught many years ago, but anyway, we enjoyed that. And then Mr. Banks and I had a date the other day. We, we, but we went out, we were invited by the Walton Robotics Club to see the facility that they have now, they're now housed in the old East Cobb cafeteria, where I used to eat a lot of fried chicken and, and rolls. We'd have bomb scares when I was at East Cobb. We'd grab the fried chicken as we went out the door from lunch, but that was the 70s. But anyway, they've got a wonderful robotics field set up. I got to, did you drive the robot, Mr. Banks?
No, I passed.
All right. It's a tractor drive. I'd made it around the perimeter. I didn't try stacking or putting things on top of each other. We got some really smart kids, and we have some adults that have put in hours and hours of time and money to make this thing happen. So anyway, it was fun to go do that and have lunch, so Mr. Banks and I did that. Now, let's see, let me go here. On January the 25th, Rocky Mount Elementary had its annual drama presentation. Ms. Barbara Evangelista is a part-time employee, and I think this was their, I want to say, do you remember, it was the 20th year, I think? Does that sound right? I'm going to, 20th year, yeah, Mr. Banks was at that, too. We did that together. Anyway, the kids did a wonderful, wonderful drama that they had, they had all kind of written together, but Ms. E., as she's called, she's been doing, this is her labor of love, and she even got principal Peggy Fleming, once again, to take on a role. I forget, she was the queen of something, I forget. But anyway, Peggy Fleming has a great sense of humor, great administrator, and goes all out when it comes time to the drama. Now, along, talking about arts, January 24th through the 26th, the Georgia Music Educators Association had their annual meeting up in Athens, Georgia, and a lot of our music educators from Cobb were there, attending, but our schools are represented. I'm just going to call out that the following schools had present, had presence at this conference demonstrating something, whether it's chorus, orchestra. So I'll just say that who was represented? Chatham Hill Elementary, Durham Middle, High Tower Trail Middle, Lost Mountain Middle, Walton High, and Pope High all participated. That's the performing arts. Now, visual arts. Last week, I attended the, and each of you is going to get a copy of these books, I attended the autograph party that has held, this was the 14th year, this is the 2019 coloring book for Alatuna Alley and Tappy the Turtle. And the Cobb Marietta Water people put together this competition, and most of the participants are Cobb County students. They had over 800 kids, students send in artwork to be included, and there were 12 that were finally selected out of that 800-plus. And the schools that were represented there for this were, these are the elementary school kids. We had Green Acres, Addison, Frye, Mountain View, Varner, Bullard, Green Acres, Harmony Leland, who am I, Soap Creek, Bell's Ferry, Dew West. And then, last November, we had a board meeting, and I missed the Cobb Marietta Water Art 2019 Watersmart Calendar. This is the middle high project, and this is where they go out to middle, let's see, was it middle high? Yeah, from, from middle schools, and they asked them to submit artwork to go on the calendar. And then, as you can imagine, 12, 12 months, 12 pictures are selected from that group. And the schools that participated in that were Simpson, Barber, Lovinggood, Floyd, Pine Mountain, and Cooper. And so I use these two, two examples here, plus the Rocky Mount. We care about STEM. We care about academics. But in Cobb County, we've got Buku. Is that the right number? We've got Buku, bajillions of teachers, educators, working in the performing arts, the visual arts, teaching our kids drama, giving a child a concept and saying, "Now, think about this up here and draw how it makes you feel." And we've got kids who are learning to perform great art, great music, and they're being, they're being, they're coming to the level where their instructors feel confident in taking them to demonstrate new music to other educators around the state. And I think that speaks a lot about our performing arts and our visual arts department. Now, normally, I would adjourn, but we're not. You all can leave, but we, do I need a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Scamhorn, I had one more thing. I apologize.
It'll be very short because I'm trying to hold my, keep what voice I have. I would be amiss if I didn't wish Bob Downs a great speedy journey. He and I met in 1998 in Sprayberry High School, and he's always the forefront of technology and the priority of the students and our kids. When I got to Sprayberry, if we didn't have the only interactive whiteboard in the county, we had one of the few that he was able to get on a, on a grant. Bob has always been the consummate gentleman. He's never been afraid to tackle the unknown. He's always been a professional, and though he's leaving the best, wishing the best. So Godspeed, Mr. Bob Downs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scamhorn. Do I need a motion to go back into executive session? Okay. Mr. Scamhorn, motion to go back into executive?
Make a motion to go back into executive session for personnel.
All right. Have a motion, have a second. Mr. Wheeler, seconds. All in favor? Okay. That's 7-0. All right. Thank you. Y'all have a great week. What's left of it? What's left of it?
All right, thank you very much. Without objection, we're back from executive session. And we're going to pick up with the items requiring action following executive session. Mr. Ragsdale.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I ask Mr. John Adams to bring all items requiring action following executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I have two items, the personnel report and then a land item. First of all, the human resources personnel report for today, February 13th. The administration recommends the approval of the identified employment actions of those individuals listed on the personnel action report as discussed in the executive session. We have three principal level or higher position recommendations. Dr. Robert Downs, Assistant Superintendent, Leadership Division, recommend you approve resignation effective February 22nd. Mr. Bruce Fraser, appointment to Assistant Superintendent, Leadership Division, effective February 25th. And Lisa Leach, Director of Payroll Department, Financial Services Division, retirement effective June 1st. This concludes the personnel report.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Do I have a motion? Mr. Morgan. All right, this, all right, Mr. Scamhorn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we approve, as said, the personnel actions.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Banks, seconds. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. All right, that's 7-0. All right, next.
My second item, we have an announcement regarding the intent to purchase property. The board intends to consider for approval at its next regular meeting the following real estate contract. Purchase of real property and improvements on approximately 1.7 acres, including 45,787 square foot of office and warehouse building at 484 Glover Street, Marietta, Georgia. Tax parcel number 17035900040 for $2.275 million plus ancillary costs, including inspection fees, closing costs, et cetera. This concludes the announcement regarding the intent to purchase property.
Okay, and that was a public statement. We'll vote on this next month. Okay, do I have any other? Mr. Scamhorn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion that we approve the superintendent's employment contract amendment.
This is a contract?
It's amended, yeah, it's a contract.
Right, okay, all right, we have a motion, we have a second. So Ms. Davis, I'm going to, my second is Ms. Davis. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. All right, and that is 7-0. All right, do we have any further business? All right, having no further business and considering the late hour, this meeting is now adjourned without objection.